All right, well, welcome to the regular meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council, the October 1st, 2020. Let me read this as we start our meeting. In accordance with the governor's executive order, we're continuing with the availability to meet electronically. And our vice mayor, Madeline Scales-Harris, is participating telephonically tonight. And Ms. Scales has our opening prayer, and then I'll lead us in our pledge. Ms. Scales.
Thank you, Mr. Shackleton. May we bow our head, please? Dear heavenly Father, we love you and we adore you. Forgive us of our sins, seen and unseen, known and unknown, Lord. Lord, our nation is in a mess today. Our new normal is now hatred, violence, disrespect. Our young people in our schools are missing mentors, relationships, fond memories. Lord bless our teachers and administrators, as they are under so much stress, Lord, trying to make the school normal for our children. Protect our frontline workers as they attend to this virus. Bless their families who are making tremendous sacrifices. We look to you for direction, Lord. We trusted you with our past, Lord, and we're going to trust you with our future. Forgive us for complaining more than we praise you, Lord. And as we begin to handle the business of our city tonight, Lord, we ask that you move in the midst of us and give us knowledge that we may carry on in the manner that you would have us do. This is our prayer that we ask in your darling son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have our consent agenda before us. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Schacklet?
Aye.
Okay, our old business, land matters, use matters, consideration of ordinance 20028, amending the sign ordinance. This is the second and the final reading. Comments or questions?
I had had a couple of changes last week that I had suggested, and I don't know if, you know, I mean, what the council wants to do. I know it was kind of a close vote, and we need to be mindful of the fact that Shane's not here, and whether or not if we feel like it's the appropriate thing to do, take a vote, you know, with him not being here, but, or if it's, you know, if there's four or five of us, obviously, that are doing the same thing here, I think it would be, you know, okay, but if it, I mean, if it ended up being 3-3, I don't know if I, you know, how we need to, how we would handle that. Just on a second reading, what happens if it's 3-3?
It's 3-3, it doesn't pass, which means it fails and...
Start all over?
Yep.
Okay, so let's be mindful of that. I would, you know, the changes that I had asked for did not, were not in the motion, so I guess what I would say is maybe, is if some, well, let's talk about, yeah, Robert? So, we can talk about what changes I had, and I mean, I'm just trying to navigate this a little bit, because as it sits, if everybody voted exactly like they voted last time, we're going to be 3-3, and it failed versus it passed last week, and even though I was on the fail side, I don't want that to really happen, just because we got six people here. Did you have...
No, I was just in case you had questions for me.
Oh, okay.
I think it makes some sense to, based on the conversation that we had in the public comment or the meeting, the public comment meeting, I mean, I think we need to talk about it a little more, so I'd make a motion to defer it and us have further conversation.
I'm comfortable with that, too. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Wright, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris?
Yes.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Schacklet?
Aye.
All right. Now, for consideration of ordinance 200Z01, the zoning of approximately 78 acres of property located along Northwest Broad Street. This is the second and final reading.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and second, call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Schacklet?
Aye.
All right, let's see, a new business, our motion, approve design bill contract with Morgan Construction for the replacement of hangar one. Mr. Gurke, if you'll come to the podium, please. Good evening.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight I bring to you an agreement with Morgan Construction, and this is the beginning of the design process with the hangar replacement, hangar number one. As you know, we received an airport economic development grant several months ago, and we went out after the success that we were able to have with the terminal design-build process. We went with the hangar construction side of this, and we had eight firms, that, eight teams that came before us. And the winner, before the, decided by the Public Building Authority, was Morgan Construction, along with Allen and Hochel, as their team members there. This project is to provide us the design, right now, of a 16,000-square-foot hangar bay, which would have four hangar bays associated with it, 1,000 square feet of office space, and 2,000 square feet of shop and storage space. And this is designed specifically, and the grant was received specifically, for Mike Jones Aircraft Sales, who currently employs around 15 employees that do avionics work and maintenance on aircraft. And with this, he's hoping to expand and also provide more jobs in the coming years with this new facility. Mike is known worldwide for his work that he does on Piper Aircraft, and this will be his new home. And I think on the new terminal area that you see already taking shape with the new terminal, will be an attractive location for him.
All right, are there any questions, comments?
Sir, move.
Second. Motion and second, call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Schacklet?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gurke. Tonight, Shores Road-City-County Maintenance Agreement. Mr. Huddleston.
Good evening, Mayor Protem. I'm Schacklet, members of the council.
First time I've been called in.
Appreciate being here tonight. We have before you tonight the Shores Road Maintenance Agreement that we'd like to present to you. The West Lawn Development is currently underway at Shores and Veterans Parkway. I think I've got maybe an exhibit up on your screen, you can see the area. It's continuing, Shores, our West Lawn Development is continuing to advance and following the approved master plan. Shores Road, in that master plan, Shores Road was proposed to be realigned with a new intersection of Veterans Parkway. That work is mostly done, pavement's on the ground. What is missing in that is tie-ins with the county portion of Shores Road, and approximately 1,250 feet of pavement of Shores Road will be impacted by that work. The county asks that the city consider entering a maintenance agreement to be responsible for the oversight and maintenance of that portion of the road. In addition, the county would then take on a road renaming that would be created because of the realignments. And we have anticipated the, or estimated the physical impact on this to be about $3,000 per year, with those funds being from the state street aid or stormwater utility fee. Our recommendation is to approve the draft of the agreement and authorize the city attorney to make any minor revisions that might result in the review and approval by the Rutherford County, and then authorize the mayor to execute that on behalf of the city once the document is finalized at the county. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Hey, Sam, thanks for taking the time to call me last night, and we, after we've phone-tagged a little bit, but I tried to dig back in a little bit through here and see, and this thing that you've got up on our screen right now, the map that you've got up on the screen, is the only thing that we've got in the way of exhibits. And so I was, I was, it doesn't really give a very good full picture of what's going on here. You know, there's verbiage in here about, you know, 5,000 feet of, I think it said 5,000 linear feet, along that southern boundary of West Lawn or the northern boundary of the right-of-way. I get, so a couple, but, so I can't, I don't know if we're seeing all that, but a couple of things I want to just make sure of.
There's a different exhibit, Councilman LaLance.
Yeah, we don't have that one, yeah.
And the area of interest there would be at the lower left-hand corner?
Yeah, starting around Birch Tree, where it says Birch Tree, the C.
Well, yeah, the Veterans Parkway portion there is, there, the two red dots, three red dots, that's Veterans Parkway, and then the Shores Road actually would run along the southern boundary there. The yellow shading is the existing city limits. All of Shores Road currently sits outside the city, with the exception of a very small portion, 300 to 400 feet, at the current intersection of Shores Road.
Okay, so for you guys' knowledge, by the way, we, I had to go before we could kind of get to the, till I could kind of get an understanding, so I still have some questions on this, but, well, last time that we brought this up, we had, we had asked, I believe, to annex the road. Is that right?
Yes, actually, the last time West Lawn was here, it was for rezoning of the, of the triangle portion between Old Shores and Realigned Shores. But in 2016, approximately, staff and I, as the applicant, requested that the city consider annexation during that annexation, and even before, at the planning commission, and even with city staff, we heard from some of the neighbors south of Shores Road, who spoke at the public hearing at city council and brought up some issues. At that time, city council acted to defer the annexation, and that's its current, current status.
So, in this particular, the way that this has come about, were there any kind of notices put up for the neighbors? I mean, because I think, you know, one of the, I told you last night, and I apologize, it's been four years ago, so I don't remember everything that I probably, you know, that I, everything about this, but I do remember it being, there was, there were some things about it that I didn't like and that the council didn't like at the time, which is why it got deferred instead of getting annexed at the time. I believe one of them was the fact that they're going to close down Shores Road at the end, and so there's no more outlet out onto Veterans Parkway from Shores Road. There seem to have been one or two others that I just can't really remember right now, but I guess that leads me to the question of, you know, doing this agreement this way, I'm assuming there was no notice to the neighbors like there would have been for the annexation. Is that right?
That's correct.
That concerns me a little bit, even though...
Other than the normal notice, or other than the normal notice of the, of this public meeting.
Okay, that does concern me a little bit, even though the southern neighbors are the, are in the county, I mean, I do know that the city portion of this, it was part of the master plan, and that's kind of what they're expecting anyway, to some degree, I mean, at least to some degree, but, you know, whether or not the residents of West Lawn knew that we're going to redirect everybody who comes off of Shores Road right through their, their neighborhood or whatever, I don't know that. I mean, and so, I guess, I'm a little...
Maybe here's a little, little better exhibit showing some of that.
Yeah.
This was also before the Rutherford County Road Board in a, in a meeting earlier this year, and so we did, the, obviously, the county residents would have representation on the Rutherford County Road Board. We presented the concept and the draft of the city-county maintenance agreement, and that was managed through their program.
It seems like last time I remember this thing going up there through that roundabout. Is this the way it's always been? Is this...
This is, this is master plan from, from the 2006 timeframe, when the West Lawn PUD was approved. That connection through their development, West Lawn Boulevard, and I'll use the telestrator here, that connection's in. And so, and that's primarily residential. The portions here and here now are primarily commercial. And so, what's, what's before us tonight is this realignment of Shores Road here to line up with a project that's on our major transportation plan and was also in the master plan of West Lawn, which is to realign Blackman Road.
Okay, were those residential before they went to commercial?
Yes.
So, I...
Well, I say that, this, this area was residential. That was proposed as townhomes, but with a rezoning action of several months back, and I'm going to look at Mr. Blom...
I remember that, yes.
That was last year.
Yeah, so it's been about a year ago, those were rezoned, and that's so far developed as a community medical complex. And so, we know that Certificate of Need was approved for St. Thomas, Rutherford, in a joint project with TOA. We expect to see some additional medical on that.
And the, on the, I don't know, whatever that'd be, north...
North to the top.
Yeah, does it, do we have that property?
The Blackman Road extension?
Yeah.
Yes, here, so, so this part is also in the West Lawn PUD, and that Blackman Road realignment was in that West Lawn PUD.
Mm-hmm, good.
And so, maybe just a couple of things to think about, and I might pop back out to this other exhibit. I think...
I just wanted to add, we did receive a master plan, and our planning commission submitted this month for the property across Veterans Parkway for that, for that realignment right there.
Yes, the Blackman Road realignment and initial phase would include the approximately first 200 feet or so of that roadway to create the fourth leg of that, of this proposed intersection.
And one last question, I think. Is, is there some reason that that is a better place for that red light to be, rather than down there at the end, where there would be more distance between the red lights?
Well, yes, and so, it's not really based on the distance as much as it's based on, the Veterans Parkway between Burntob and Highway 96 was a joint TDOT-city-county project. TDOT built the interchange at Interstate 840. TDOT also took the lead on the design of Veterans Parkway and participated at 50%. The county and the city then contributed 25%, so it was a joint city-county project. If you'll recall, Shores Road intersected with Blackman Road, or at that time, it was Beezy Road, at a 90-degree angle here. But with the realignment of Veterans Parkway, it created a very awkward skew. TDOT's answer to that was a very short tangent section of roadway, maybe I don't have it very good here, which did not give us adequate room for signalization and transition. Doesn't meet city minimum standards, quite honestly, today. I'm not sure it met what it did for TDOT, but, so this intersection was, was created just as a minimal intersection to allow the Veterans Parkway roadway project to advance. At the time it was designed, nothing was known about the West Lawn master plan, although development was anticipated. This project for Veterans Parkway was probably completed in the 2006, 2007 timeframe, but the design was actually completed several years earlier through the TDOT roadway design process. And so, TDOT gave us a road connected to an interchange, our, and this is a local road, so even though it was built by TDOT, it's, Veterans Parkway is still a local road. So, TDOT has no oversight of it at this point, only the interchange.
So, who's responsible for the maintenance of the road?
Under contract with Rutherford County, the city of Murfreesboro is responsible for the maintenance of all Veterans Parkway from Burntob to South Church Street, even the portions, the portions that go in and out of the city-county.
If we enter this agreement with the county and subsequently decide to annex the road, would it, would it supersede the contract with the county? Would it, would it...
Yes, and we'd be, we'd be responsible when we annex right-of-way that's, that's in the county. We ask for the county's consent to annex that right-of-way, and then once the right-of-way is annexed into the city, we become the responsible party for the maintenance, and the right-of-way, the right-of-way benefits accrue to the city.
If we annexed it, would this be necessary, this contract?
Not, well, if we annexed the full 5,000 feet, no. If we annexed some portion of it...
Maybe.
Maybe, yes.
Okay.
And, and so, maybe if you would indulge me for a couple more minutes, I think, the thing I think would be important for this body to think about tonight is what's, not what's out there today, but, but where this road needs to be in our future. We've always had gateway into the west side of Murfreesboro visions for this property, for this area. A new interstate interchange was created. Historically, interstate interchanges have been very significant corridors into our community, and, and so, as we look forward at, at what this could be, what you'll see on this exhibit, or at least the city staff's view of how things should progress out there, and then also what our 2040 major transportation plan would progress. And so, there's several locations on here showing future signalized intersections there. And then also with the improvements to Blackman Road, Veterans Parkway, Manson Pike, and Burntob Road, we see a very significant roadway connection, roadway network here. What I'll also tell you about this is the current traffic count on Veterans Parkway is about 20,000 cars per day. In 2040, that's projected to go to 40,000 cars per day. That's a very significant amount of traffic. Blackman Road's currently at about 4,500 cars per day. The estimate by 2040 is that it would go to 11,000 cars per day. I don't have modeling on Shores Road, but I can say that there's several thousand cars per day that use that now, and we would expect those numbers to perhaps double in that same timeframe. And so, what that creates for us are conflicts, and conflicts are the enemy of efficiency in our transportation facilities. And so, what we do when we have conflicts is we try to eliminate those conflicts or manage them. Signalization is a traffic conflict management tool. And so, what we, what you will see with this plan is we propose to move the conflict for Shores and Blackman up about 1,300 feet to this first signalized intersection, and we also propose to manage that conflict by giving those traffic movements opportunity to turn safely under green light conditions, red light conditions, turn arrow conditions. If we leave the connections to Blackman Road and Shores Road as they're currently existing, those two sections, here and here, will be used, and they'll be used to avoid the signal. There'll be times of the day when drivers will determine or decide that they can make better time by not going through the signal, and so they will, they will use these bypasses really to skirt around. And so, what happens to us then is we create a new conflict, and a higher-volume conflict at these locations, which then would require us to manage those conflicts, perhaps with a four-way stop. That four-way stop then becomes very disruptive to traffic advancement on Shores Road and Blackman Road, because every car has to stop. Shores Road and Blackman Road are the more significant road networks here, once you leave veterans, and so we would normally try to prefer traffic on those roads to continue to move and while stopping the side streets. And so, by, by creating the cul-de-sacs, we then limit the point of conflict to this preferred location here. And then everyone has an opportunity to come to a signalized intersection, make safe and efficient turns in and out of, and on to and off of Veterans Parkway. And with the, with the projected traffic counts of 40,000 cars per day, those will be very significant conflicts. So, my thoughts to us today are, let's think about how this needs to be in the future and not how necessarily it exists today.
On the, on the drawing you've got for us, the one, the only one that's in our package, if I'm looking at the right road, and I think I am, which is labeled B, it appears in the drawing that that's just a straight-up two-lane, two-lane road going all the way to the intersection, whereas if you look up at West Lawn, it looks like it may be widened at that intersection. I can just see a little portion of it. What does that intersection projected to look like right here that we're creating?
Get out of that and reopen it, Mr. LaLance. For some reason, the exhibit didn't want to advance. It's probably operator error. Still operator error. I did not get this exhibit approved by Darren Gore before I came in.
He does not approve the message.
Yeah.
The reason I'm asking is...
And so, B?
Yep.
That's Realigned Shores Road, here.
All right, what's that intersection look like? And the road coming, coming Shores Road, is that just going to be one way in, one way out, right there? Two lanes?
Today, it's built as two lanes. In the future, it would be, we will have four lanes. We'll have a westbound on Shores, going this way. We will have a left turn onto Veterans. We will have a through movement onto a realigned Blackman there, and then we'll have a dedicated right turn onto Veterans. What you see today is phase one of the construction.
Okay, but we got right-of-way and everything all ready to widen that thing to be a bigger... And I guess kind of part of my question is whether or not if we make this big, if we make that intersection big enough, whether or not we might be able to forego putting a, putting a signal at West Lawn and Veterans, you know, to avoid having three in a row right there?
Well, our, you know, our desired spacing on those signals is about 1,600 feet for a major arterial, and so the separation between West Lawn Boulevard and Shores Road realigned is about 1,600 feet. Meets good criteria for us as far as managing the progression of traffic on a major arterial.
I guess my point is, I'm, you know, I know 1,600 feet's a good number...
Yes.
For a minimum. I just hate to have a bunch of red lights 1,600 feet apart, you know, is my, is my point. I mean, I guess...
Well, and so, the other thing that would drive that then would also be the warrants analysis, and so, when, when that intersection would get to the level of requiring a signal, then the conflict is so high that we need that signal to manage the conflict. The Pendleton Road, or Pendleton Boulevard-West Lawn intersection at Veterans Parkway, remembering that we still have 40,000 cars per day moving on Veterans Parkway between Shores Road and the interchange.
Would you anticipate that the red light would go in at the end, at the Shores Road intersection before the West Lawn intersection?
The, the current agreement we have working with the developer of this property is that those would go in likely concurrently.
Thank God.
But, but the developers agreeing to fund them are a portion, agreeing to fund 100% of West Lawn and 1/3 of the cost of the signal at Shores.
All right.
Mr. Huddleston, when you talk about traffic count, that doesn't take in TOA that's moving out there, it doesn't take in the hospitals that are moving out there, it doesn't take in Publix or Kroger that's coming along?
It's actually based on some modeling from our major thoroughfare plan, Mr. Wade, and also some land use that came out of the 2035 land use plan. So, these traffic count projections for 2040 were based on a build-out of the city of Murfreesboro, consistent with our land use plan. And, and so, origins and destinations and trip counts were all, were all projected in the future. We had real traffic counts to set up the model, and we then reran the, the model with higher traffic counts and the new road networks proposed. So, it does include some level of development, not necessarily those specifically, but some level of residential and commercial development along this corridor, as well as the increased growth of traffic generally in our community.
Well, I think you've done a good job with this, and I think this Shores Maintenance Agreement is a right step in the right direction, so I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Schacklet?
Aye.
All right, we'll consider the Stormwater Fund participation request from the housing authority. Yeah. We'll consider the Stormwater Fund participation request from the housing authority. Yes, Mr. Gore.
Councilman Shacklet and other members of council, good afternoon, or good evening, I should say. Wanted to go over a couple of items with you this evening. The first is a Stormwater Fund participation, or a request for Stormwater Fund participation for retrofits involving street-side rain gardens, also known as planter boxes, in conjunction with the redevelopment of the city housing project on North Academy Street and Oakland Court. I've got a couple of exhibits here to go over with you. This is the, kind of the master plan for the housing project. What they're wanting to do, this is kind of the, on the right portion of your screen is existing conditions, and on the left is kind of the proposed residential units. What the planners and designers are asking for are to put in some right-of-way rain gardens or planter boxes in conjunction with this development. They're asking for up to $150,000 in Stormwater Fund participation. Just FYI, this is consistent. We have done some modeling for a north downtown planter box project study. This would decrease imperviousness, could reduce up to 92% of our total suspended solids and 55% of phosphorus load. I bring this up because that's important with regards to kind of the strategy we're taking with the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. We have, in lieu of taking some very expensive advanced nutrient removal at our water resource recovery facility, we're talking to the state about doing a nutrient trading-type model, where if we can remove nutrients via stormwater runoff and non-point source treatment, that we could get credit for that at our water resource recovery facility. So, we intend to do a lot of, I expect to be coming back to you on several retrofits around town, so that we can see these reductions in phosphorus and nitrogen loading. So, I just think it's important for you all to, to note that, because it does have a benefit to us potentially with our permit, expanding our permit at the Wharf. So, with that, I'm available for questions, if you have any.
All right. Any questions?
I just have, this is educational for me. The, the rain gardens specifically, or what helps capture that nutrient runoff, so it doesn't go into the runoff of the sewer system?
It goes into the soil. No, it's an infiltration system. It does just percolate down into the soil. It does not get into a, there may be some underdrained components to the planter boxes, but it's not going to be a direct conduit into the storm sewer system.
So, it's capturing it?
It's capturing it, and you're really letting the soil kind of do the treatment. It's in the, it's a bioretention cell, and you're just letting the water soak back into the groundwater versus trying to convey it to a surface water.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye. Salem Highway widening phase two, Wiser Engineering Design Proposal.
Sir, staff has requested Wiser Company to submit a proposal for the redesign of the water and sewer relocations associated with the TDOT's widening project along New Salem Highway between Old Fort Parkway and I-24. This, the map before you kind of shows what phase two is, and I've got a little highlight here, going from Old Fort Parkway over to I-24. That is phase two of the Salem Highway widening. Phase one is ongoing right now, which is between I-24 and Casey Lane. The reason for this redesign, I'll go through a little bit of a history here, I'm sorry, the design contract amendment is in the, in the amount of $30,450. That's an hourly, not to exceed. Kind of giving you kind of a history of this project and some policy concerns that I want to bring to your attention. In 2010, Wiser Company was given this contract to do the utility relocation from Old Fort Parkway all the way out to Casey Lane on Highway 99. In 2017, TDOT split it into phase one and phase two. Again, what we've got before you tonight is phase two. This April, TDOT put together or mandated that no utilities would be within their right-of-way. And so, this is what really prompted us to get this amendment, this engineering design amendment, because we'd already had the utilities designed, but now that there's the new policy from TDOT that says we don't want them in your right-of-way, Wiser has to go back and do a redesign. That creates a concern, one, because they want to let this bid in March of 2021, so that's a very aggressive schedule. But, secondly, this policy of disallowing utilities in TDOT right-of-way, that's going to have a significant impact on us on Bradyville Pike and Thompson Lane, and I'm not sure that we can ultimately adhere to this policy that TDOT is requesting without incurring great expense. So, for this particular project, we're looking at Wiser redesigning it, and we want to see what the cost estimates are with the redesign, getting it out of the right-of-way versus what it cost the initial design inside the right-of-way. If it's a nominal cost increase, then I think we, we don't argue or go into full negotiations with TDOT. But, in these other projects, if they are not going to be flexible with us, I mean, Bradyville Pike is, in essence, a neighborhood street that has utilities down the middle of it to service, to service residences on each side of the road. And to try to get the utilities out of there right-of-way, there's going to be some significant operational expense and some significant construction expense. So, I'm just bringing this to you kind of as a little bit of a raising the flag. This is a nominal design fee increase, but in the future, this could be coming back to you more significantly. And I think we may warrant meeting with TDOT and discussing if we can get some flexibility in their new policy. But with that, I'm available for questions, if you have any.
Any questions? Can I have a motion?
Sure.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gore. Ms. Wright, do we have some licensing standing?
We do. We've got one for a restaurant at 1626 Middle Tennessee Boulevard. This would be a new location for beer. We also have one for a bowling alley at 1720 Old Fort Parkway, Unit C. This would also be a new location for beer, although this owner had beer at a different location. The restaurant has met all the requirements, and if you approve it tonight, we would issue this permit tomorrow. The bowling alley still needs to finish up their building and codes final inspections. So, we would not issue that until that has been completed.
All right, thank you.
I was just going to make a comment.
Okay.
On one of the beer permits for the, the restaurant. You know, I had concerns about this last time we brought that up, and I, I reached out to the applicant and had several conversations with him related to some of the challenges that he has had related to just, you know, you know, some of the legal things that have happened. And so, I'm not, after having talked to him, I feel much better about, you know, making a recommendation for this, but I did want to just comment on the fact that I did reach out to him directly and have some of those conversations. And so, I'm, I'm not going to oppose this on this application process.
I'll move for approval then. Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye. All right. Board and commission appointments, anything? None tonight? Payment statements? None tonight? Okay, other business? Is there any other business needs to come before City Council? Let's see.
I have one item.
All right, Mr. Martin?
Bill. I did want to circle back. I know it's not on the agenda tonight, but related to last week's discussion that we had for potentially hiring a new medical director to work with Murfreesboro Fire and I made a lot of calls this week related to all parties that were involved in that to make sure that everyone knew that, first and foremost, you know, I'm very supportive of us reconciling any differences we have with the county predominantly, that, you know, as far as I'm concerned. I know it's more complicated than this, which is why we have, you know, staff working on this. But, I do feel like that there's some protocol and standards of care, things that need some work, and specifically for our firefighters and for Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue to be able to practice, you know, to fulfill their licensure requirements and to do the job that they want to do and are trained to do in the field. And I know, again, it's more complicated than that, but for those that are not aware, Dr. Galloway, Russ Galloway, who is the county EMS director, did come and speak during the public comment before the council meeting. And, you know, one of the things that I think, at least from my perspective, we realized as a result of some of the communication is, I felt like we, as a council, were very committed to having better communication in an, in an effort to try to resolve some of these issues. I know this has been a challenge between the city and the county long before I was on the council, so there's probably lots of things that I do not know, but I have made my absolute best effort to be as educated as I can on, on these issues. And, you know, when the council made the decision to, you know, ask that we have a task force and emphasize that we work this out, I didn't feel very good at all about the fact that part of that process would be changing medical directors midstream. And, you know, for those that may not be aware, you know, obviously, our medical director, Russ Galloway, you know, as he said tonight, resigned. That obviously forced a hand for us to try to figure out who our new medical director was going to be. So, I understand that. But, in, in Dr. Galloway's comments tonight, knowing that he is still willing and very interested in serving in that capacity, I think it's really important to the commitment that we have made to the county, considering that everything I have heard related to the effort that they have made has been in good faith, that they are working with us to try to resolve some of these issues. And I think they're doing it in a very open way, in a very positive way, and I think we should do the same thing. And so, I'm going to, this is really not about anyone else being the medical director other than who I think would represent, who has the background, who has the knowledge to potentially help us get to the place we want to be faster. And so, I would like the council to just kind of put it on the table and have some discussion about whether or not we think Dr. Galloway, willing to serve, is that person, because I just don't feel comfortable moving forward with someone else until we have done the work we said we would do in the task force to try to work out the interlocal agreement and other differences that we have with the county.
I'm good with it. I think, I mean, you know, I think it makes some sense to me. I'm fine with it as far as, I think maybe the, if we, you know, I think probably, in my opinion, we just get to the point where we say, look, until we get an interlocal agreement now, and then after that, I think, you know, if we want to have a discussion about whether or not we, we just, you know, look for a different medical director, I think it's going to be forced on us one way or another. But, that, that to me would be a good starting point for when that discussion reappears for me, would be after we get the interlocal agreement knocked out.
And to be clear, you know, I'm fine if we change. I mean, that's not my, that's not my lane if we decide that we want a medical director. I have no issue with that. I think the staff should select that. Obviously, we can talk through that. I just think it's really poor timing to do that now, and I've, I've heard the arguments, you know, of why we think that's good. I just strongly disagree with it, so.
Mr.?
All right. Other comments?
Mr. Martin?
That's, go ahead, can I?
Yes, Madeline, go ahead.
Mr. Martin, is that a motion you're making?
Well, I just really wanted us to discuss it. I'm happy to make it a motion, but I wanted everybody to have a chance to comment, so.
And I, you know, as, as far as being a motion, you know, I think that's what's happening, so I don't know that we necessarily need a motion on it, but I'm good with whatever we need. I mean, I, I mean, as far as, as long as we're not hiring somebody, he's our medical director, so whatever, though, I mean.
Mr. Wade, did you?
I'm in agreement with Ronnie. I usually never agree with Ronnie. I think we do need to set the direction for staff to say, we don't, we're not looking to hire a medical director, because that's the phone calls that I got last week was, you're looking to hire a medical director, and we're not at this present time. I think what we're trying to do is get some kind of resolution with the county to making sure that the EMS services are correct and we're all on the same page before we move further. So, I'm in agreement.
I'm also in agreement, and by going this route, it doesn't look like we're taking the cart before the horse. So, I'm in total agreement with that.
I think she said, I'm in a total agreement with that. Celeste?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Skels Harris.
So, I'll make, you, you anything, Sean?
I'm kind of like Rick. I don't think you have to make a motion or anything, because we're not hiring him. So, we can just let it table and let it go out until the interlocal agreements, you know?
What about it, Mr. Anderson? Do we have to make a motion?
Well, so, I'll just, I'll just make my comment. So, I wish we didn't have to make a motion, quite frankly, because I think we shouldn't have to do that. But, you know, I feel like it was pretty clear a month and a half ago of what we wanted to get accomplished. And again, to circle back to last week, where that showed up on our agenda, especially in the consent agenda, to me, it's going to take a motion to make sure that message is, is very, very clear of what we're trying to do, because we didn't do that last time. We said, go back and do this. So, I'm going to make a motion that we contract, keep Dr. Galloway as our medical director, and we can work through exactly the best timing and how we do that, whether it be a six-month contract, a 12-month contract. But, what I don't want is to leave it open-ended where, you know, we talked about having this task force meeting and trying to work this out in weeks, you know, six weeks, eight weeks, 12 weeks. We met in August, and we haven't met in September. And granted, there's, there's some good reason for some of that, but now we're talking about meeting it again at the end of October, and that's just the second meeting. And so, you know, I just, I'm not as comfortable that we've given clear directive. And so, I'm willing to make it a motion, so I move that we, we reinstate Dr. Galloway or see if Dr. Galloway will remain as our medical director for six months.
Hey. Yeah. Go ahead. We have a, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Our further discussion. Mr. Tucker, did you want to address this?
Yeah. I just wanted to note that, you know, there is already an existing contract, and so, and Dr. Galloway submitted his resignation in, with respect to saying, you know, within the 90-day time period to terminate that contract. I think the ball is kind of in his court to, and maybe he did that tonight, that he wants to withdraw his resignation. And so, I guess the question for staff would be, do you want to go back to, the question from staff is, do you want to go back to the existing contract, or do you want to amend that contract so it's for a term certain? That, I think we would need that guidance.
Question. Mr. Tucker, do you know when the current contract expires? Is there an expiration on it?
I don't, if I remember, I think it's something that there, if there was an initial I don't, if I remember, I think it's something that there, if there was an initial term and then it renewed automatically unless someone exercised, one of the parties exercised their right to terminate the contract, but I'm not 100% certain of that. I don't think it was necessarily, it's a three-year, four-year, five-year contract, but I could, I would have to look at that.
So I think the way I would modify my motion, my motion based on what you're saying is, as long as the existing contract carries Dr. Galloway contractually for the next six months, I'm fine with that. If it's longer, I'm fine with that as well, but I want to make sure he has enough time and we give enough time for this to go through so that if we gave 60 or 90 days and we're not finished with this process, we're not dealing with the same issue again, and then this comes back up. So it's, it's, the spirit of this is just to allow him to finish his work, and if the contract allows that for six more months, I'm fine with the existing contract. If it does not, I would propose we give him at least six more months, or we can give him longer if the council wants it, but whatever.
I'm, I'm struggling with where we are. Where, where are we on this motion? Are we, are we, is, because, I mean, my comment before, this, a motion was made is that we got a contract, I mean, you know, we're, this is where we already are, is he's here until he says otherwise.
But, well, I think, I think some of this.
Four to six months.
Let, let me see if I can help a little bit with this, and I don't, wouldn't normally in this seat try to say that, but I think the, the spirit of what I think council wants has been expressed by Mr. Martin is that, that we asked Dr. Galloway to, to not tender his resignation, because there was a 90-day, my understanding is there's a 90-day window that he has to give us notice of that, and under the present place we are, his resignation has been submitted. I think if we simply request that Dr. Galloway rescind his resignation...
Then we're back to the...
Then we're back to the original contract, and I, I think then, you know, the idea of terms are six months or four months or the day after the 28th of October, whatever we want to do, we can negotiate or talk about that later. We just, I guess the will of council, I mean, what I'm hearing is all we need to do is to ask Dr. Galloway to rescind his resignation, and then we are back to the original contract, so.
And frankly, it doesn't matter if we sit up here and talk about a six-month contract. If he doesn't rescind his resignation, it doesn't matter anymore.
We're still there. We're still where we are.
We don't have a six-month contract with him, you know, so.
You can make, you can make, you can make the motion without putting the six months on there, and that's all we have to do, and it's, and we don't have to...
But I think the direction to staff would be to ask Dr. Galloway to rescind his resignation so that we are still operating under the existing contract. That would be a clear way of getting to where I, where we might want to be, so.
That's at least the next step, as long as he's willing to do it. And, and I'm comfortable doing that, modifying it to say, we'll just ask, the motion will be to ask Dr. Galloway to rescind his resignation, and just further discussion. What I'm trying to do is to keep it from being, hey, by the way, the current, the current contract expires in six weeks anyway. I don't want to be in that situation, so if you take a look at exactly what the current contract is, and if we need to revisit this next week, then we can, but, so yeah, the motion for now is to ask Dr. Galloway to rescind.
And since something has not happened, may I make this comment that I think we heard tonight that he was not or did not attend the task force meetings, that it's council's desire that he attends and be invited to the task force meetings.
Absolutely.
And participate in the task force meetings.
Absolutely.
So I think that would, might be something you'd want to add to your motion.
I think procedurally what we need is a, a motion to amend your original motion and a second on the motion to amend, and then move forward on the amended motion.
Can I make that motion?
Yes, you may.
I make the motion to amend my original motion to, from asking, from renewing the contract of Dr. Galloway for a specific period of time to just asking Dr. Galloway to rescind his resignation.
Second.
Our, the second, does the second agree to that amendment?
Madeline, second.
Well, I think you have to, the one that seconded, it don't, for an amendment change, doesn't the one that seconded the original motion have to agree to the amendment?
No.
You have another? Okay, all right. That's why I don't sit in this chair every night. All right, very good. We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Wright, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye. All right. Any other business come before City Council this evening? I just want to take a moment to thank Vice Mayor Skels Harris for the opportunity to do this tonight. I really appreciate her asking me to serve this evening, and we ask and pray for safe travels for all those that'll be heading out to spring, excuse me, fall break, and, and our mayor coming back from his vacation with his family. And just thank you for this opportunity. May you have a good evening.
You did a great job.
We're done.